Hi everyone, we're just waiting to go live on the system. And now we are live. Thank you everyone for coming to this meeting, this virtual meeting. What I'm going to do first is just check with Anne Coy if she can check that everyone can access the meeting properly in terms of cameras and microphones to make sure that when people are speaking they can be seen and heard. Anne?
Okay, thank you Jane. So I'll start with yourself. Jane, you can see and hear us all. councillor Cadier, can you see and hear us?
Aye, I can certainly hear you all. How are you all?
Thank you. Councillor Dan Barrington, can you see and hear us?
Yes, I can see and hear.
Thank you. Councillor Corbett?
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Otgrove?
Thank you.
Councillor Lindsay-Melia?
I can see and hear everyone.
Thank you. Councillor Lena Semey?
Hello, I can hear and see everyone.
Thank you. Councillor Barbara Mace?
Yes, I can see and hear you.
Thank you. And councillor Tom Crowe?
Hello Jane, I can see the speakers at any one time. I can hear everybody.
Just Jane. And councillor Sharon Connor? Can you see and hear us?
Yeah, I can hear and see. Thanks Dan.
Thank you. Mayor Anderson, can you see and hear us? Okay. Mayor Anderson?
Yes, please.
Councillor Richard Kent?
I can hear okay, but I can only see the speaker.
Okay. Councillor Shortall?
Yes, thanks. Everything's fine.
And councillor Rasmussen?
I can hear everyone and I can see a select few.
Thank you.
Just to confirm to all of you that are dialling virtually, in the room is myself, councillor Corbett and councillor Groves, so we will be on the one screen through the meeting. Can I just double check that the livestream is working correctly? Fantastic, thank you very much. Can I ask that members leave their microphones on mute if they're not speaking? Can I also ask if officers will turn off their cameras unless they're addressing the committee? When you want to address the committee, can you either use the hands up feature within Teams, put your hands up and get my attention, or use the chat feature if you don't think that I've seen either of those and I'll make sure that you're called to come in at the relevant sections?
Jane?
Yes, Peter?
Sorry, I wasn't introduced before, but I am, I am, I have joined you and I have visual and hearing and on my screen I've got Mayor Anderson and Richard Kent next to each other, so it's quite disturbing for my voice.
Sorry councillor Richard.
So when you do come in and when you're brought into, can you unmute your mic, say your name, wait a second, and then we'll make sure you're on screen and we can hear you, and then we'll let you know and you can make your point. Is that okay with everyone?
Fantastic, I'm just going to take-
Can I just ask councillor Richard which side is councillor Kemp on? That side.
Oh don't worry, you're on the left though.
That one.
I'm on the right.
Sorry, I just thought I'd break your reality.
I'm just saying I'm on the side of the righteous this evening, Mayor Anderson.
So I think we've had apologies from councillor Roy Gladden. So we'll move on to the first paragraph item of the meeting, which is declarations of interest. Are there any items on the agenda that members need to declare an interest in?
No.
No, thank you very much. So the minutes of the last meeting, so can I move the minutes of the meeting held on the 6th of February 2020 be approved as a correct record?
Agreed.
Are there any matters arising? No, thank you very much. So we'll move on now to the main item of this agenda. So this meeting has been called to enable a discussion on the scrutiny panel report on fractional investment. The scrutiny panel was chaired by councillor Jane Corbett. In terms of running order for this meeting, what I'm proposing is that councillor Corbett will introduce the report and that Mayor Anderson, as the cabinet member, will then respond. I will then open it out to questions and comments from members and then if Mayor Anderson wishes to come in again at the end to respond to any of those points, he can do. And then what we'll do is we'll, if the report can be agreed, what we'll do is we'll ask it to go forward to Cabinet. Is that agreed with everyone?
Agreed.
Fantastic. So just before introducing councillor Corbett, I'm just going to remind members that this report was produced to consider the principle of fractional investment and the fractional investment development model. It's not to investigate or comment on any individual schemes within Liverpool or elsewhere. So this meeting is subject to qualified privilege, so members really should be cautious about making any statements or comments about individual developers or developments, and particularly if those comments could be considered being capable of defamatory. Does everybody understand?
Understood.
So this was a big piece of work produced from the 1819 Select Committee session. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to invite councillor Corbett as the Chair of the scrutiny panel to introduce the report.
I'll keep with the camera. I just wanted to start off with a thank you. There's been a lot of people involved in this report as we know. First of all, I'd like to thank the councillors who were part of the scrutiny panel. And I think all of us nearly made all the meetings. I know councillor Kemp couldn't make the very last meeting. But the key thing for us was that we were the ones that put the recommendations together and then worked very closely with the, I worked very closely with the officers then to write out the whole report. So the recommendations came directly from the members of the scrutiny panel. I'd also like to thank the officers. We had a lot of officer support from this in all the meetings and also in the writing of the report. And some key officers as well who left the authority now. Can I also thank the people who gave evidence because they gave up of their time and it was really useful to listen to them and to hear this from their perspective. I reckon we had about 10 meetings and some of them for obvious reasons were held in private and that meant that information could be given us that was pertaining to those particular people within their situation, which was really helpful for us to try and understand actually what was happening. As we know, as the Chair has just said, this was not an investigation. It was a scrutiny panel on behalf of the Regeneration Select Committee to look at the issue of fractional investment and similar models and to see what impact that was having, to understand what that actually meant, to look at the council's policies and decision-making structures and our roles and responsibilities, to identify sort of the impacts of the investment models on relevant stakeholders, and to write a report that would come back to here, including recommendations that would link to national and local levels, and also regulatory and professional bodies as appropriate. So what I'm going to do is, I know people have had some time to read this through, it's also been in the media, and just to go through the recommendations briefly with everybody. I can hear someone speaking. Okay. So if you look at page 25 in your papers, sorry, I can hear someone speaking, I don't know whether it's-
Can all participants ensure they're on mute unless they're speaking, please?
Okay, so we did, as the Chair said, we took a lot of evidence of people, we looked at things in detail, and we came up with 11 recommendations, all of them key. The first one was around a frequently asked question document that would lay out for anybody to understand actually what the whole thing about the investment in proposals meant. So that for example, warnings investors, money might be a risk, that was a key one for us, strongly encouraging potential investors to obtain independent advice from their own professionals. We were aware that the Smiths' Regulation Authority had put out warning notices to their members around some of this type of investment. And then we asked specifically for warning notices, the hyperlinks to those notices from the SRA, the Smiths' Regulation Authority, to be very clear for people. And then the roles of each of the professional bodies was key for people to be able to understand. What we wanted people to know was who to contact if they had concerns, so if they wanted to report concerns. A statement in there that was very clear that was from City Council, Liverpool City Council, saying it was totally independent of developers and does not endorse any scheme, whether by award of planning permission, by approval of plans, or by any other means. And then a statement from us that saying we counseled on the merits or risks of any particular scheme. Number six on that, within that first recommendation, was key, because a lot of people who are new to investment and new to development think that because a planning authority has given permission, therefore everything's okay and therefore it's worthy of investment. And that's not the case. We wanted to make sure that people understood the difference between a planning approval and an investment in development. And we've asked for, that FAQ document to be approved by Cabinet by the 31st of October this year. It's important to say that there will be a last scrutiny panel meeting, which we've diaried for the 30th of November, so that if all these recommendations are agreed, we can check that none of it is left on the shelf and all of them will be in place by the 30th of November. Okay, recommendation two quickly, we wanted to be able to show a developmental process diagram, so people could really understand what a development was, what it meant, have it visual, a bit of a visual thinker and worker. So put it very clearly in a diagram so you can see how the process goes, who comes in at what stage, and people can then understand developments. And then endorsement about the code of practice, and that must be drawn up by the City Council together with associated training and guidance, so that, because this is quite a complicated world as we know, the development world. And that would mean then that all the elected representatives and the officers would understand exactly what was happening, and there will be a code of practice that we all stuck by, some details around that, which is particularly relevant to development. And again, that code of practice to be in draft and both legal community services to agree this if it stands up by the 31st of October, and then consultation starting to roll out for more than 2020, the completion with that by the 31st of December. Okay, that's number three. Number four, recommendation four is on page 27. Now, the council, remember that this has been going on for a very long time, so one of the things I wanted to do was apologise for the fact that this has been a scrutiny panel that has been, has taken a long time to come through the system. Some of that was my fault because I needed space to be able to write it up on both my neck and my side of my shoulders actually gave out last summer. And then also we needed the various issues, and then of course this was going to go to the March meeting, and then we had major lockdown under Covid. And so recommendation four means that although there is already a new due diligence policy that has been updated, as a scrutiny panel would felt that it would be worth us going over that, seeing if there's anything that we missed at all, or anything that was missed. And that already has gone to Cabinet, which shows that timetable of starting the scrutiny panel in August 2018 and only bringing it to Regen Select two years later. And so there's been a lot of work within the council by the officers to pull a lot of the issues that we were concerned about together already. Then if you look at recommendation five on page 28, that's a much clearer and tighter and more locked down approval process for disposal of council land to developers. And again, sometimes it's quite unfair on developers because they think that if things get through at the planning application stage, then obviously the council would automatically sell the lands to them. And we wanted to, well, the key thing is if you look at that second to last paragraph there, it talks about us looking as a council about the potential long-term impact, physical, social, environmental and economic, and how it also links with the local plan, or the emerging local plan, the city plan, and the local neighbourhood and ward in which the development sits. Recommendation six is page 28, and that's reporting the financial expenditure in connection with third-party failed stall developments. We've spent an awful lot of council money on trying to mitigate some of the issues around this, not the investors, we can't do that, but where for example, some of the work on highways hasn't been done, and that was part of the section 106 agreement, or whatever it means, that we've had to step in. And that needs to be taken on board and we need, I need to see as, with the scrutiny members of the committee, how much that has actually cost us. That is really clear for the government then to see, that councils are in a really difficult position at the moment, where we quite often have to pick up negative impact on the ground of some of these stalled and failed developments. Then we've got recommendation seven, page 29, still Companies House and Charity and the Charity Commission. What we suggested there was that national insurance numbers should be logged when, say, directors give their names and addresses in. So Companies House and Charity Commission have the national insurance number there, because if you get one tiny spelling mistake on your name, so if I was a director and I said, but my name is Corbett with an I, and then another one with an E, it would show something different. So that again locks down, it makes it much more transparent. Recommendation eight is page 31, that is about sharing best practice between professional and accredited bodies. And there was, and we need to talk this through with these bodies. If you look at them, there's a long list there on page 31. RICS, which are institutional charges surveyors, which is around, particularly around valuations. SIPF in terms of the chartered public finance and accountancy. You've got the RTPI Day on the planning, you've got the Financial Conduct Authority, you've got REA in terms of architects, you've got the SRA, which is the Smiths' Regulation Authority. And from listening to people, we interviewed quite a lot of people from those professions, and it was very clear that they act in a very reactive way rather than a proactive way. And what we're suggesting here is that they become much more proactive, and also that they meet twice a year in Liverpool or probably virtually, and talk to each other so that there's no gaps between what each of them is doing. And if one of them is thinking, we've got a major concern around something that's going on here, we wanted to share that with all the people, that is the form to raise it in. It's a closed meeting, but they would then report back to the council, to the chief exec, the section 101 officer, a monitoring officer, and also back to this committee here, which is key, and the ordinary governance committee, which deals with obviously governance and money. And then we go to recommendation nine, we're nearly there now, we're out of here. And this is particularly around the Smiths' Regulation Authority and guidance and practical advice, and goes over the page. And there is, so for the last one, you can see drawing to practitioner attention where types of schemes may be at risk of being used as vehicles for money laundering and/or fraud. So again, what we're trying to do here is say, let's be really transparent, let's be really clear, let's make sure that everybody understands the pitfalls here, the issues, the concerns, and we can really make a difference in Liverpool and also nationally. Because this is not just an issue that is related to Liverpool, it is a national issue. We have been hit pretty hard in Liverpool by it. Recommendation 10, there's a misunderstanding that the council, obviously what it doesn't, we don't, can go onto any development site and we will be involved in looking at the standards of the developments and we would be the building inspectors. That is no longer the case and hasn't been for a very long time. So recommendation 10 basically asks the government to let councils, to fund a three-year pilot project, and it would start it off in Liverpool and see if it works. And so as part of the planning conditions on planning applications that would come through, to allow the council building inspectors and planning enforcement officers at several points during the development phase to go on site. Now, for really good developers, they'd be fine with that, in fact, they'd probably welcome it. And a lot of good developers anyway already use, for example, the council building inspectors. But what we've also said in there is that the government should allow for a statutory cooling-off period for the benefit of consumers, i.e. the consumer investors. If you look at consumer protection, you've got much more protection if you buy a coat or a takeaway than actually if you put money into a development. And that just cannot go on. And so that would put in there, recommendation 10. And then the last recommendation, which is on page 33, goes over to page 34, is, and this is up to the government obviously, but who knows whether they would let us do it? It would be great if they did, because then we can share best practice and learning with the rest of the country. To let us have a three-year pilot, which would actually act as a special working room, and that will be the council, the government, professional bodies, the LGA, Core Cities Network, et cetera. And what that would then mean is that we would work together so that there wouldn't be siloed thinking and practice, that would no longer be acceptable. And so for example, we would be able to pull together planning, development, and start to look at regeneration, unregeneration part of the council, and together we'd be able to properly do placemaking. And that is something that this government particularly has just crashed, and they're making it harder and harder for people to work together to produce sustainable development and development that makes sense in our city or in other places, specific to those localities. So that's what we're asking for, and the City Council will be the council body for any money that we would get, so devolve government funding for development schemes, and schemes would go through that route, and we would see then together what difference that would make. And we would then report back to government. So you can see at the end we'll report back to, obviously, our select committees here, but also the relevant government departments and ministers and the select committees, the LGA and Core Cities Network. And the last thing to say is that that particular steering group, or special working group as we called it here, would use the Fair City Policy and the Inclusive Growth Plan and the Emerging City Plan, the principles within those. And the principles that we've used for defining good business and purpose-driven business rather than just profit-driven business is from Blue Proof for Better Business, and I'm lucky enough to be on their advisory group now. And if you, I'll just finish, Chair, with reading out this little bit in the middle. So what is a purpose-driven business? I'm not saying forget profit, what we're saying is purpose-driven rather than profit-driven. So what's a purpose-driven business is one that operates true to a purpose that serves society, respects the dignity of people, and so generates a fair return for responsible investors, and then welcomes public scrutiny and the alignment, looking at the alignment between stated purpose and actual form. There's other principles there, but those are the ones that we already have within the council in procurement and the Fair City Policy particularly, and also the Inclusive Growth Plan, and that'll be the city plan as it's coming through. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So as I'm sure you've all read and heard from Jane then, it's a really wide-ranging and in-depth report and recommendation based on a wide breadth of different sources and different people from different organisations and their evidence. What I'd now like to do is invite Mayor Anderson to comment as the cabinet member. Thank you.
Great, thanks, yeah, thanks for that. And I just want to put on record my thanks to Jane and all of them too, the members who participated in this. I think it's absolutely clear, isn't it, that you know, we all, we all felt really uncomfortable with what happened and what was going on in our city with regards to the fractional sales. But it's fair to say that we also recognise that this wasn't just an issue for Liverpool, it was going on across the country as well. And I think the recommendation sets out reasonable steps that we can take to make it absolutely clear to people that they have to do and should do, and to take their own due diligence in relation to investments that they wish to make, in any opportunity that exists, not just here, but in any other parts of the country. And you know, I hope that the report can be used by MCLG and the LGA and others to say that we should campaign for central government to recognise that there are weaknesses here within the system that allows people to do things that we find immoral and unacceptable. I think though, there are a number of things. I mean, for me, you know, there is at this current time round about 2.4 billion pounds worth of developments on site in the city. And there's round over a billion pounds worth of developments continue to take place over the last seven, eight years. I think that said, there are, as I said, a number of incidents that we were, from a city's point of view, from the people who've lost money, were deeply disturbed by. And rightly, the police are looking into those incidents and the things that went on. I think what we've got to do and should do is to try to make sure that our reputation as a city and the way these practices have been used doesn't happen again. We could do all we can within the powers that we have to take the responsibilities and try to do things differently, or at least in the facts, the frequently asked questions and other things. We point out what are obvious to us, but not necessarily obvious to people from abroad or anywhere else, that actually takes into account, for instance, plan approval, and assumes that the City Council backed that scheme, or if there's any land that was disposed of by the council previously, that that in itself endorses the modus operandi, the way a particular developer behaves. So I think we've got an opportunity to try to, as Jade said, persuade, you know, Core Cities, the LGA, central government, to listen to some of the things that we've learned from, and some of the things that have actually cost us. And not only cost us, but cost innocent people in far-flung places. They're often their lifetime savings, and we need to expose that to government, so that government listen to us and understand the potentials and the pitfalls that lie, you know, ready to snare and snap up individuals who just see this as an opportunity to take a stake and invest in their future. So you know, we've had experiences where we've seen stall developments because of cladding and other issues, section 106 that we've had to pick up the pieces as Jane referred to, that has cost the City Council. So you know, we've got to try to make sure that we avoid that. So I think, you know, the report makes it clear that legislation needs to change, and we need more powers as councils and other regulatory professional bodies need to work with us and work closely together to protect ourselves as local authorities, but to protect investors. So we'll have a look at the recommendations, I'll listen to legal advice and outside advice on what we can and what we can't do, but hopefully submit that back to yourselves to have a look at. We're trying to meet those timelines that- But hopefully, submit that back to yourselves to have a look at. We're trying to meet those timelines that Jane stated at the beginning. So we try to have something in place by the end of November, Chair. That's my comments. I think you're still on mute, Chair.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I was just saying, as you said, it's not just a Liverpool issue. But I think that we should be proud as a local authority that we have looked into this in this detail and that we can send it to government to use as a national document and to make those changes, not just for our local authority, but for local authorities and planning authorities across the country, because that could only be for benefit, particularly, as you're saying, highlighting what may be obvious to us but isn't always obvious to potential investors or potential other people involved in this. Are there any other... Yes.
Chair, can I just respond to that comment by saying I'm more than happy when we finish with the documents and with the recommendations that we actually submitted to MCLG and to the LGA and to Core Cities? Because that goes without saying, as far as I'm concerned. I think, as I mentioned at the outset, the report is a good report. The report suggests things that I think not only should we do, but what others should do as well. So I'm more than happy to take that up, Chair.
Thank you. Yeah. Are there any other comments or questions from members? Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Much of this report, of course, I agree with. We did work hard lately on trying to solve some complex situations, which, some of which, were outside our control. And I do think, from what I've heard today, that we're being a bit sanguine about understanding the way that Liverpool has been the epicentre of this. I know that people have challenged this, but I've looked at it time and time again. There have been independent reports done. But in Liverpool, we've had as many fractal investment failures as the rest of England put together. And most of the other fractal investment failures in other parts of England were actually caused by the people who'd caused the problems in Liverpool. Now, you can dispute that if you want to, but you could also do some very simple checks to see that that is the case. We must ask ourselves why that has happened? Why, for example, many of the developers that are now being looked at by people in blue were major sponsors of our forays into MIPIM accounts and other big ventures? So there are big-picture things as well as the little development control things that we need to think about as well. But when this goes to Cabinet, we have done, in a way, what we can. And Joe is right, it now goes to the Cabinet. But there are three things that I think that we need, or I would ask him to consider alongside this report. The first is, what can we do to help the people who've lost in one way or another anything between half a billion and a billion pounds? Now, we can't reimburse them, of course we can't. We haven't got that money, and it's a civil or legal case. But there are ways, and I've suggested some to the Chief Executive, that we could help by dealing with some of the solicitors, bringing civil actions, joint civil actions, what do they call it, class actions, that's it. We could be putting pressure on some of the administrators of the failed schemes to make sure that they just don't pass them off to someone else who's going to ignore the basic problems. The second problem that I'm asking them to look at is that some of these failed developments failed more than four years ago. I won't mention any. We all know where they are, but they're often occupying highly important parts of our city, highly visible, and acting as a real block on development in those areas. What powers we got to try and take those over, either perhaps in some cases demolish them or to finish them using reputable developers. And again, I've made some suggestions to the Chief Executive about that. And the last thing, a point that I would make, yes, it's all very well sending it to the LGA, Core Cities. I think they'll be highly supportive. I suspect the Ministry of Housing, local government conveniences won't be as helpful. But the fact is that there are scams circulating at this minute. We had, in this city, we had about four months in which we weren't getting scam documents, brochures through from people making absolutely unlikely promises of guaranteed returns on the market in Liverpool. Those have started up again, and people are, because they're getting desperate for a place to put their money with interest rates at 0.1%, are looking at places to invest. So we need to be selling this report in a way that says we know there have been problems, but if you're thinking of investing in our city or anywhere else, but it's our job to do it in this city, what are you... There are some simple rules you should follow. Some of them are in this report, some of them are. We need to be far more aggressive if we're to be seen to clean up our act, to actually admitting what's gone wrong here, saying it's changed, but putting the responsibility back then if we're doing all we can on purchases, not to make daft choices. And then finally, one organisation that's been left out of this that we did discuss is the Financial Conduct Authority. Because at the moment, these are unregulated investments. And people have been taking money out of pension pots or other savings that they were keeping for pensions and putting them into these areas because they thought it was the way they were going to get a decent return on their money to provide their pension in their old age. Now, I seriously feel that we need to add the Financial Conduct Authority to this. These need to become regulated investments. If they were, we could take much swifter action on this. Now, that needs the Cabinet agreeing to do that, and of course then taking it through to the government in particular. So those are just some ideas I've got. I'm supportive of the document, but we've got to be much braver about our use of it. Thank you, Chair.
Okay then. You've made a couple of comments regarding the report directly, so I'm just going to bring in councillor Corbett, then I'll bring in Matt Anderson and then councillor Crone.
Councillor Kemp, I think most of that actually, some of that is interesting and some of it is totally unfair and wrong. If you look at the Financial Conduct Authority, it's already mentioned in the report, it's already there in the recommendations. So I'd suggest that you go back over those recommendations and look at them really, really carefully. I think that's just unfair to say that. I think it's unfair on the other members of the panel as well. So please go back over that and look at it. The second one is, you already said this several times about Liverpool being the epicentre. That means that it starts from, it does not start from Liverpool. There is a major problem in Liverpool, and we have said there is, but there are in other places as well. In fact, that includes Manchester down the road. So making these comments regularly is not helping the city at all, and it is not helping other people either. And it is not helping the developers who put their time and money and the investors into this city to make it the great city that it is. So I'm actually quite angry about that one. I understand, and wow, how difficult for people who have been investors from across the world to find that they have lost their money. But that is not up to the council to sort out. There are regulation authorities there, there's the police there, there's the FCA there, there's the SFO, as you said yourself. So we've got to make sure that those people talk to each other, and that's in the recommendations as well. Because what happens is that people talk in their own little world, and they don't actually talk to each other. And then that means that we miss, not we, but the city misses out there because people are talking to each other in their bubbles and not not talking to the other people in that world, if you like, in that investment world. What we're trying to do here is say we are the city that recognises this as a problem. And yes, it is a problem in Liverpool, as it is elsewhere, and we want to get this right. But we also recognise that we can do things locally, but we have to do things nationally and pass that over to the national people to sort out. And one of the key things that no one else is doing is that we have these purpose-driven principles. So you have businesses that are purpose-driven. And if you look at some of the best developers in this city who have been around for a very, very long time, and other people that are coming into the city that actually want to invest and are investing in the city, they are much more around purpose-driven business model, using that, which is actually supporting and serving society and is generating a fair return for responsible investors. I'm sorry to come across quite tough on you, councillor Kemp, but I think that's a fair response from me. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Matt Anderson?
You've got just a couple of points really, because, you know, Richard is like us of the has polar opposite views and obviously grandstands quite a lot. But sometimes he makes some sensible contributions, and he's made some sensible contributions and recognises what we are trying to do. But then wants to try to beat Liverpool up and suggest that Liverpool has in some way aided and abetted what's gone on. For instance, he talks about MIPIM. Now, you know, we made it absolutely clear because of the financial constraints that the city was under, that I stopped MIPIM. I stopped us going to MIPIM. And I said to the private sector, to the Chamber of Commerce, to independent downtown Liverpool and to businesses, that the only way we would go to promote our city and what goes on in our city with them is if the City Council didn't have to pick up the bill. And that's exactly what happens in Leeds, in Manchester, in other cities where they have a partnership approach with businesses and go to MIPIM to sell the whole city. And that's what we do. That is absolutely... You know, for me, I'm sure many, many businesses will feel incensed by the inference that there's some impropriety taking place because they spend money for the Chief Executive, for Director of Regeneration, for the City Council to attend MIPIM. They all make these contributions in order for that to happen. And equally, you know, things like the Mayoral 100 Club, which actually helps us put on events in the city, are all paid for by the private sector because we can't make ends meet. So I think it really is wrong to paint everybody or smear every business and every developer and everything that happens in our city is something that is wrong, Richard. And I think that it is unbecoming of you to actually say that. And you then went on to actually talk about you yourself have approached the city as Chief Executive, to talk about potential developers who could take over stalled schemes. Well, what gives you the right to talk to anybody about any particular business if you don't want me to or you don't want anybody else to do the same? So, you know, we have to recognise what happened. You know, the particular site which I did not intend to name, but for instance, the 0.1%...
I have not talked to the Chief Executive about any developer. I talked to him about a process.
Right. Well, I'm glad you cleared that up because quite often it's comments that are misconstrued by others that aren't clarified. And that's why I'm clarifying the point about MIPIM and about other things, to make it clear to people that there's no impropriety or suggestion of any favouritism from people going to MIPIM. And equally, with regards to the Great George Street developments, you know, that was some eight, nine years stalled. And, you know, nobody could foresee, nobody could foresee what went on. You suggested in your commentary that we knew about these developers doing dodgy things in other cities. Did you raise them? Did you raise them? Did you raise them with the Chief Executive? Did you raise them with me? Did you raise them with anybody in terms of any of these issues going on elsewhere? I'd suggest, by the way, that you don't answer that because at the end of the day, but you should do it to the city solicitor. Because at the end of the day, we've got to be careful about what is said here. But your suggestion that you knew in advance about developers that were engaged in Liverpool, that's what you said earlier on.
I'm going to bring in Tony Reeves, Chief Executive, at this point.
Thank you, Chair. I don't want to get involved in political knockabout, but just to be absolutely crystal clear, councillor Kemp raised suggestions for a process with me in writing that was also sent to the mayor, and it was in the Echo on the same day. At a subsequent meeting with councillor Kemp, I just briefly outlined for councillor Kemp that in agreement with the mayor, we had already put a team together to look at stalled sites in the city. And that's all I want to say at this point, just to correct this. You don't want to get involved in things, just to be absolutely clear what has actually gone on here. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. And Chair, can I just continue? Because the Chief Executive has made that point perfectly clear, which I thought I did after councillor Kemp's explanation, and that's fine, that's not an issue. The Chief Executive, like me and like other people, have also been trying to see if we could rescue on stalled developments in the city, to try to help people who'd lost funds. And we will continue to try to do that. That's exactly what makes us different than others because we feel for the people who've lost. And that's why we're trying to help and trying to do the best we can. But, you know, I just come back to my point, Chair, at the very beginning. And I think we've discussed councillor Kemp's contribution. You know, I want to make it absolutely clear that this, you know, panel have come up with recommendations that we're going to look at. I think they've looked at it in a fair light. I think Jane has responded in an objective way, speaking truth to power, which we listen to. And if we can make changes that tries to help protect people, that's exactly, exactly what we will do and should try to do. Yes, we mightn't have got things right in this process. Yes, we might have been able to do things differently. But some things were stacked against us, the legislation, the regulations. But if we can get them changed, then we can lead the way and point out what's gone wrong, then that's exactly what we'll do. So I welcome the report, as I said, and I look forward to presenting it with some of the the things that we might need to change or nuance a little bit to put forward to people. Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Crone?
Thanks, Chair. I'd just like to start by thanking Jane. I think it was a really good piece of speech and the evidence that we have. Really good quality and I think it's a really good recommendation to hopefully make a difference going forward. Just on the discussion that just passed, I think Richard does raise a really important point about that Liverpool was, you know, very hard hit on with investment. But at the same time, you know, we have faced up, we've tried to educate ourselves about how it came about, and we've come up with something. So I'm hoping it will make a difference. I've just got a couple of questions on this. First of all, Recommendation 8, I think is going to be really important, getting all the professional bodies together to try and solve some of the situations. I just think it needs to be quite proactive, it needs to be looking at a lot of individual sites.
I'm really sorry to put across you there. Is there any way you can get a bit closer? It's quite distorted. Is there any way you can get a bit closer to your microphone?
Okay, I'll lean right at my laptop. Is this any clearer for people or is it still poor? Okay, so yeah, so I was just saying, looking at the specifics of the report, I think in the Recommendation 8, which pulls together all the professionals, we need to be really proactive, we need to be looking at individual sites, we need to be looking at marketing material that's going around, and we need to be trying to intervene as much as possible and trying to highlight practices which don't fit with the recommendations that we've put in. and trying to highlight practices which don't fit with the recommendations that we put in place. One concern that I've got about the report is that, is it looking back a little bit? Can you hear me again? I've obviously got a bad internet connection here. So, yeah, the models are changing a lot. Are we going to be able to be aggressive on changing how the finance that are being involved with the people?
Chair, can I suggest that councillor Crone puts those in writing, those questions?
Quickly type that up into the chat and I will read them out here.
Okay, I'll put them in.
Have any other members got any questions or comments?
Chair, can I just respond to that, please?
Of course.
It was just, and it was something that Richard Kemp touched on and councillor Crone has picked up on, which is around Liverpool being the epicentre or Liverpool being hard to sit. Of course, what people need to recognise is that, you know, there's two and a half billion pounds worth of developments now. And we've had over a billion pounds worth of developments every single year and some major schemes and major projects. And I think, you know, we have to accept that that is part of the problem because Liverpool was having a lot of regeneration success and a lot of development taking place and a lot of new businesses and a lot of jobs being created. And that's why developers look at the city and come here. And of course, that's why a lot of people wanted to invest and some people taking the risk without doing due diligence as well. So, you know, I'm sorry, but we can't hide that. That Liverpool in some sense and peoples have become a victim of Liverpool's development success and have been exploited by unscrupulous people. And that's the point about the whole report and what we've got to try to do to stop it. But Liverpool has been successful. And as I said, there's two and a half billion pounds as we currently speak in the pipeline. With, I have to say, Chair, a massive 13 billion pounds, a massive 13 billion pounds worth of investments over the next four to five years taking place.
Thank you. And I think that is, it shows that Liverpool isn't necessarily like other cities in terms of current levels of development and how well it is doing. In terms of the questions of Tom, so Tom's asked two things. First is, in terms of Recommendation Eight, how proactive will this be in terms of monitoring individual sites, keeping an eye on marketing materials? Secondly, new scams and models are being developed all the time. Can this report be adapted quickly to stop with the schemes failing under different models? A lot of it relies on changes at the national level. How successful can we be if government ignore the report? I will bring in councillor Corbett to answer those. But I think some of these, in terms of specifically in the first thing, will be discussed in our follow-up in November and seeing how that's going. Councillor Corbett?
Thanks, Tom. The first one on Recommendation Eight. We now need to, as long as these recommendations are passed tonight and the mayor and the Cabinet agree, we then need to be able to get hold of the council of all the various agencies and professional bodies and accredited bodies and sit down and go through with them, the importance of them working together and whether they would actually commit to meeting twice a year in Liverpool or virtually, but looking at the development in Liverpool. On the second one, Chair, that was...
Can the report be adapted in terms of new models that are being developed?
So councillor Crone, if you remember, we actually looked at some of this as part of the scrutiny panel work when we looked at the P2P lending. We looked at the SRA saying Lendy had crashed. And we were aware of the, we listened to what people were saying about the actual financial instruments that people are using. They change very, very quickly. As soon as somebody says you can't use it this way, they change it another way. I think the Citizens Regulation Authority are the people that are really crucial on this one. And so if you look back to what the SRA was saying about collective investment schemes, if they are worried, if the Swissater is at all worried that what they're supporting their client with is a collective investment scheme, they have to have it recognised by the Financial Conduct Authority. And if it isn't recognised by them and they still go ahead, that is a criminal act. So there is lots of, that's why that Recommendation Eight is so important. And then there was a final one, Chair.
How successful can we be if the government ignore the report?
Okay, so we should, crucial on Tom because, as we said before, we're trying to do our best on the local level as a council and with people in the city who want the very, very best for the city. But nationally, I think we have a chance here because the government have come out with this, shall I just call it wild and wacky, to be honest with you, to put it bluntly, planning reform. So they've got the white paper out at the moment. And that will, the consultation on that white paper on planning reforms finishes on the 29th of October. So actually, we've almost got a little window of opportunity here to stand straight into the middle and, oh, sorry, that's bad language, too aggressive, to raise with the government as part of the consultation, look, we have a really good pilot scheme offer here to you. We've looked at this already, we've looked at this in great detail. Here's the report, as the mayor said before, sell the report, get it out there. And to be fair to you, Richard, that's what you said. You said sell the report, get it out there, be aggressive with it. And I quite agree with you, I quite agree with you. And with your contacts with the LGA, that would be great to be able to link up with yourself and push it out there as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any other members or officers got any points to raise? No, thank you. Mayor Anderson, did you want to say anything in conclusion?
No, Chair, I think we've covered everything.
That was Tom, it's just not lowered. Fantastic. So what I'm going to ask is that we move this report of the scrutiny panel and the recommendations contained within it to be supported and then submitted to the next cabinet meeting for consideration. Do members of the committee agree?
Agreed.
Is that unanimous? Can I, if anyone disagrees, can you make yourself known? No, that's unanimous. And Mayor Anderson as well, could I ask, you've already alluded to it, but after it's been two cabinets, would we look at submitting that to the government white paper on planning reform that's currently out?
Yeah, absolutely, Chair. And I'll make the commitment as well to make sure that this goes to my party as well for them to lobby for. I'll share it with the MPs as well to make sure that they have sight of it. But as I said, I'll discuss this with the Chief Executive and the city solicitor and any legal advice we can take before we actually agree and send it back to this committee to look at. But I hear what the committee has said in terms of the recommendations. I'll comment on that on Friday cabinet. But then we'll bring it to cabinet probably within the next month so that we hope to have it all sorted by the end of November.
Very much. Thank you to everyone and thank you to... Well, thank you to all the members of the committee. Thank you to Jane especially for chairing the scrutiny panel. It was a long-running scrutiny panel and it really, it got some really good interviews with a lot of wide range of sources. I think this report is something that we as a city can be really, really proud of that we're taking this action and we're looking at this. That hopefully then will be used nationally. So the next brief item on is the work programme. Obviously, this year it's going to be very different in terms of scrutiny. We have three meetings. They will be conducted in this way, so virtually and in the Qunad. I've got a broad work plan here with our first meeting focusing on the regeneration efforts that we've done in the wake of coronavirus. So pop-up cycle lanes without walls, bus rerouting, looking at how our city centre and how the wider regeneration has been continuing through that. The following meeting to be looking in depth into the economic recovery plan. Now, the economic recovery plan is going to the Employment and Skills Select Committee within the month. This will then be coming back to us at our second meeting so we can have a look at how it's progressing from there, following any potential second waves and see how it's there. And we'll have more of an idea in terms of progress we're making and what the government has responded to our economic recovery plan. And then the third meeting to be looking at connectivity and how the regeneration again is working across the city following these changes. If there are any members that want to put anything into the work plan or any changes to the work plan, speak now or if not now, let me know. This is going to be an adaptable work plan because we've only got three meetings. I want this to be as good as we can. And I know that in between those meetings, the Cabinet and, thank you to councillor Connor, have agreed to be giving us Cabinet member reports in writing between meetings so that we can keep it in track of what's going on rather than having to wait sort of three, four months at a time. So have any members got any comments, questions? Councillor Corbett?
This might be something that the mayor's setting up already or perhaps committee services in terms of looking at the planning reform white paper. So that, because it would need probably a meeting on its own because it's so big and it has so many changes. So I don't quite know how that would relate to this select committee, but as long as we have a good session on it that all councillors can go to if they'd like to well before the 29th of October, before the consultation closes, that'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sure that's something we can ask committee services to be looking into as a meeting, I guess not this, these meetings, if there's something going on. Are there any other points or questions? If there are, if there's anything that any members do want to add, do want to change, do want to bring up, or think that comes up, let me know, we can add it into this. I want to keep this as sort of flexible as possible just because the gap between the meetings is so long. We don't know what might happen in those intervening times. And in terms of, say, the economic recovery plan, I know I've already talked to members, that's a big issue and that will be really the main thread throughout this year's scrutiny. Is there anything other that members would like to speak about at this meeting? No, thank you. Our next meeting is actually going to be on the 21st of October. So I look forward to seeing you all there and hopefully you all before then as well. If there is anything before then, just let me know by email. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Jane. For the last, Jane, can you stop now, please?